Got a couple of things here. All right, this is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting Tuesday, January 14th, 2020. This is the reorganization meeting at the beginning of the year. With that, I will throw, we will put out nominations here. I will, first up is we need a motion and a nomination for the President of the Board of Commissioners.
I nominate Jeff Good.
Second. We have a motion, second, for Jeff Good as President. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up is Vice President.
I nominate Laura Blaney as Vice President of the Board of Commissioners.
I second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Secretary, I nominate Jim Biggs.
Second.
Motion, we have a motion and a second for Secretary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. And last up, we have County Attorney, and I would make the motion that we authorize Attorney McClure for County Attorney for 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for County Attorney Scott McClure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. The lineup is set. We're going to move right into consent agenda, and I'll turn that over to Melanie.
Approval of payroll, December 27th, 2019, and January 10th, 2020. Approval of minutes, December 3rd and December 17th, 2019. Approval of claims, December 19th, 2019, January 9th, 2020. Waits and measures monthly report filed for November 16th to December 15th, 2019. Treasurer's monthly report filed December 31st, 2019.
Okay. We'll put a, we'll throw that to the floor for the consent agenda. I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second, for the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now we're going to get in to the fun part of the meeting, one of the fun parts. We're going to be appointing citizens to board, boards that we have here within county government. These are not for all the boards. The boards are staggered out through different boards, so these are several appointments to the total board. First one we have up is the Alcohol Beverage Commission, and we have one appointment that's open, and I think we have one application in from-
Motion to approve Jason Gilianna.
Second. We have a motion, second, for Jason Gilianna is the, to continue as the Alcohol Beverage Commission appointment for the Porter County Board of Commissioners. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Now we go to Board of Zoning Appeals.
Motion to approve Mark Brickner and Deb Currie Cook.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the Board of Zoning Appeals. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have Convention, Recreation, and Visitors Commission. We have two appointments there.
Motion to approve Richard Riley and Kurt Gillan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the Convention and Visitors Bureau Commission appointments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. We're going to skip over Park Board right now, and we're going to move to Pita Boa, and we have two appointments there. Should we skip over Plan Commission?
Plan Commission, so go back to that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't read. Plan Commission, we have one appointment that's available. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Richard Burns, I move to nominate him.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the Plan Commission appointment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Now, we're going to skip over the Park Board appointment and go to Pita Boa.
Motion to approve Tammy Bianco and Nancy Colasa.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the two appointments to Pita Boa. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the Porter County Redevelopment Commission. We have two appointments open there.
Motion to approve Stephen Solarsky and Jason Gilianna.
Second.
Motion and a second for the Redevelopment Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, Stormwater Advisory Board. We have two appointments open there.
Motion to approve Scott Severston and Bob Gilianna.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the Stormwater Advisory Board appointments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. West Porter Fire District.
Motion to approve Kerry Lucas.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for West Porter Fire District appointment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. And then, so what we will be doing on Park Board, we would like at this point to re-advertise for Park Board appointments will be coming up. The deadline will be, what, what's the-
Our meeting's the 28th. 27th.
So, January 27th is our deadline for Park Board appointments. That appointment has to be a Democrat political affiliation is what we're looking for, so we're going to re-advertise for that. And then the Wildlife Management Appointment, there are seven appointments there, but the Board of Commissioners is working with the Park Board on trying to resolve some issues within how we're going to move forward with wildlife management. So what we're going to do is pump that, those appointments down to the next meeting, too, on the 28th, till we get a little bit more certainty on what we're going to do between the Park Board and Wildlife Management and the Board of Commissioners. So, stay tuned. It's only a two-week delay, and then I also think, just as an announcement, I think the auditor has made her appointment-
Yes.
-to the Park Board, and so we do have that board member appointed as well, too. So, we'll finalize with Park Board here at our next meeting. So, that is, I think, our appointments for this meeting, and we'll continue to move forward, and we'll see you back here on the 28th for the Park Board and the Zone of Wildlife Board. One thing before we head into all of our business of our meeting, we, up here at the animal shelter, were given a notice by a longtime county employee who has offered his tenure to retire as Animal Control, and with that, I'd like to have Tony Bianchi come up with Doug Crandall to honor this man who's worked for the county tirelessly for 37 years, so.
And adopted an animal as well.
And adopted an animal.
Probably several.
Yeah.
More than one.
Yeah.
So Doug has been with Porter County Government for the last 37 years, and he's held a number of different positions with the county. He informed me that he started in dispatch for the Sheriff's Department way back when, right out of the Navy, I believe. He worked as a dispatcher for a while, then he's been to the jail officer, and then he moved into the rank of corporal for a deputy sheriff. From there, went to the J. Court as a bailiff. And then he, I believe after that, came to Animal Control. He's been with me at the shelter for about two and a half to three years, and he was with the Sheriff's Department previous to that under Animal Control. Doug brought a lot of information to Animal Control for us, his law experience and law enforcement experience, and knowledge of both, you know, the law and how it's done, and what we should be doing, helped us to develop our department into a better department. So, we appreciate all that, Doug. And I know you're going to miss all the running-at-larges, and the hit-by-cars, and the gone-on-arrivals, and all that good stuff.
On-call.
And the on-call. I knew that was your favorite, so. But we wish you the best of luck at your new position at the Beverly Shores Police Department. And you have to come back and see us.
Yes.
And better be getting your animals from us. So, we have a plaque for you.
Should we all go up?
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Let's go around here and take the photos.
I'd just like to say that since I've worked so close in contact with the shelter, I have a deep respect for the amount, quality of work that they put into it. It's made a place where animals don't end up, but in effect have a new beginning, and they, they work with them very well to get them out to new homes and families. So, I appreciate everything, the hard work that the shelter does do for the animals on a daily basis, even on holidays.
Well, I would also just like to say real quick that our Animal Control people are always put in a very precarious situation when they show up. There's usually with animals, there's a lot of emotions, and these guys deal with it every day, and it's not easy, trust me. I mean, we see a lot of this, and I just want to thank you for everything you've done for the county, because I know it's not an easy job. It's a frontline job. You're the first one on, and it's, it's always different every time.
People are, the animals are-
Yep. And so I don't think a lot of people really realize what goes into this position. It's a lot, and I just want to thank you, because you handled it well, and always hearing positive things back to us, and so I'm, I'm sorry to see you go, but I also know that you're going to continue on, so thank you. I didn't see this part. We have some appointing to do for the Commissioners as well. As you see in front of you, there's a list of boards that this board members also participate in, so not only do we have all the meetings and all the other things that we do, we also are appointed to these boards as well. So with that, we're going to move to the first one, NERCY. I nominate Jim Biggs.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Jim Biggs at NERCY. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign.
I nominate Laura Blaney, Commissioner Blaney, to the Porter County Plan Commission.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Laura Blaney on Plan Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
I'd like to nominate, but I think by, by, by the fact that you're Board President, that you automatically, Jeff, sit on the Stormwater Advisory Board. So I'd like to nominate Commissioner Good as our appointment to the Stormwater Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Stormwater Advisory Board, Jeff Good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Then on Community Corrections and Juvenile Justice Advisory Board and EMA, I would nominate Jim Biggs for all three of those appointments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Community Corrections, Juvenile Justice Advisory Board, and EMA Board, as to Commissioner Biggs. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up is Child Protection Team. I nominate Laura Blaney.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Child Protection Team to Laura Blaney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. 911 Advisory Board, I nominate Jim Biggs for 911 Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Commissioner Biggs, 911 Advisory Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Center for Workforce Innovations, I nominate Laura Blaney.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Center for Workforce Innovations to Laura Blaney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. We got the housekeeping out of the way. Next up, we're going to go to Enterprise Fleet Management. This is a lease quote for 2020 Chevy Silverado for EMA in the amount of $713, 13 a month. And Lance, we've been talking about this for over a year and a half. The, the old truck with 160-some thousand miles on it is quickly fading fast.
Yes, it is.
And so, this will give us a brandy truck. This is for a deputy, right?
Yes, sir.
And will be outfitted. So, we're replacing a vehicle that has over 175,000 miles on it, and I think if you're in emergency responding, you shouldn't have a truck with 175,000 miles on it, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Enterprise Fleet Management for a lease quote for 2027 Chevy Silverado EMA for EMA Department, $713, 13 a month. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
We had to find the money, but we got it.
I appreciate it.
Lance, the, the other vehicle, they're going to the auction?
It'll eventually go to the auction, yes.
Okay. Next up, Enterprise Fleet Management. Again, we have a lease quote for 2019 F-250. This is for the Waits and Measures Department for $640 a month. This, too, I think Mike Harper came to us a year ago, and we just didn't have the money in our budget to do that. So again, Waits and Measures have waited a long time, too, and we're finally getting them a good vehicle. Their vehicle, too, is even worse than I think the vehicle we had before, so we need to put them in a, a new machine as well, too. It's also large enough to carry our, our portable weight, portable scales, and a lot of the other things that we have in that department, too. So I'll put that to the floor. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Enterprise Fleet Management for an F-250 for Waits and Measures at $600, $640 a month. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have a request by Tim Stoner to lease seven acres of Porter County property located on State Road 2 for farming at a rate of $145 an acre.
Motion, motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for leasing seven acres to Tim Stoner on county property located at State Road 2 for farming. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, Motorola Solutions. This is a final project acceptance for public safety expansion of the IPSC, Safety System for E911.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Motorola Solutions for final project acceptance for public safety expansion of the IPSC. That's the Safety System for E911. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Another one for Motorola Solutions. This is a final project acceptance for logging recorder upgrade for E911. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, again, for Motorola Solutions for final project acceptance for logging recorder upgrade for E911. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Now, we're going to get into some pay apps here for the North County Annex renovation. What we're going to do is group these, if you've been coming to our meetings, likely we've been grouping all these and voting on them as a block, because we do have them printed on our agenda. So we can go all the way through, what, 11?
Go from 1 to 19.
Oh, we'll go to 1 to 19 then. So what I'm going to do is, we can vote on all these at 1. These are pay apps per the agenda, and this is for the North County Annex renovation, and it would be pay apps 1, noted number 1 through 19 of the agenda of this meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for North County Annex Pay Applications noted as number 1 through 19 on our agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. 1 through 4 together. 1 through 4. Okay, now we're going to move to 157 Franklin Street, and we're going to do pay apps 1 through 4 as a block, because they're just regular pay applications.
1 through 4 are the allowance authorizations.
So move-
Oh, I, okay, I was-
What do you call it when you're backwards?
That.
Backwards.
Motion to approve. For second, I guess you already made that.
Yeah, I made a motion.
We have a motion and a second for allowance authorizations noted 1 through 4 on the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Again, for those in the audience, allowance authorizations are, there's a dollar amount in the budget for an allowance, and what we're doing is now, we're acting to spend that money toward that allowance. This is not over the budget, this is in the budget, and we're using, we're just satisfying that line item. So just, that's what a, that's what allowance authorizations are. I always try to make sure I explain everything, probably too much, but. And next one, we're going to go 5 through 10, and these are pay applications, so we will be working on number 5 through 10 on the agenda. Motion to approve. Second. We have a motion and a second for items 5 through 10 on the agenda for pay applications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Number 11, Stands Painting and Decorating. This is a change order number 1, and this is in a credit in the amount of $4,333.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Stands Painting and Decorating, change order number 1, which is a credit of $4,333. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. And then the last one is change order number 2, in the amount of $1,002 for some additional hose beds and floor drains, as we had to relocate an existing storm line drain that we found while we were digging.
Motion to approve.
Second. Oh, we have a motion and a second for Circle R, change order number 2 for $1,002. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now we're going to move into Purdue Extension, Anetta Jones. Good morning, Anetta.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Well, we're getting there.
Good, good. You got a long agenda today, actually.
Yeah. Hopefully, we'll get through it quick, so.
Good.
What do you got here?
So these are, this is an updated contractual services agreement. It updates it with the amount that the council has approved for, from our budget.
Okay. Good. Motion to approve. We have a motion and a second for an extension, the extension contractual agreement between Purdue University and Porter County Government. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Have a great year.
Okay, you too. Just by the way, 4-H enrollment's wrapping up this week, so if anybody wants to enroll, now's the time to do it, okay? And I also brought, just for your information, a listing of the different 4-H clubs that we have. We have two new regular 4-H clubs, plus the four stiff 4-H clubs.
Oh, wow. It's getting bigger.
It is. Ruin all the time. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anetta. Next up, we, Porter County Convention Visitors Center, Lorelei Weimer and Attorney Dave Hollenbeck, and it looks like we have a lease extension to discuss. Good morning.
Good morning. That we do. Visitors Commission comes to you this morning requesting your approval of a new three-year extension of the lease agreement we have with the National Park Service for the Visitors Center. This has turned out to be a very good relationship on both sides. You've probably heard some stuff, but Lorelei can confirm, just becoming a national park has incredibly increased the traffic through that facility, and that's a good thing for, for everyone. Not to bore you with the details, but this becomes problematic for us, because National Park Service does not negotiate their own leases. It goes to the General Services Administration, which at this point was even more problematic, because they passed it off to the Corps, Army Corps of Engineers. Now, what they know about leases, we found out-
They were too overloaded.
Very little. But the document you had before you-
We knew that. Too overloaded.
The document you had before you is a new three-year extension of the agreement. We like to think of the lease payments that we receive fall into one of three buckets. The first bucket is a square footage charge that they are assessed. That's mitigated by the fact that the federal government paid for 80% of that building. They're not going to rent, rent from a building they paid 80% from, so that is set back.
We tried.
We tried, and it didn't work. So they, their rent is only 20% of the typical rent. The second bucket that goes into the rent calculation is for operational expenses. We share those pretty much 50/50. The third bucket is a fund that we secure for putting money aside for capital projects as they develop. If you look at page 2 of what you've got, that lays out the three amounts. It goes from $85,158 in the first year to $97,186.24 in the third year. We had hoped to get, and we thought we might get a little longer-term lease, but with all this switching, we were just happy that the Corps of Engineers knew who we were, where we were, and were willing to-
Typically, it's a five-year, right, or a 10-year?
I'm sorry, say that-
Typically, it's a five or 10-year commitment, right?
We tried to get, we tried to get a 10-year commitment out of them, and so you understand, National Park Service would love to do that, but-
Yeah.
-the intervening bureaucrats, until they get more familiar. It is somewhat unusual to have this, this synergistic relationship between the county and the feds, especially, it's usually the other way around. The feds own the building, and the county is leasing it. The fact that we own it kind of throws them for a loop on, on occasion. So we candidly decided we'd take the three years and start working already toward the renewal of it.
That's what I was going to think, as soon as this is approved, you'd need to turn around and start working.
You know, and that's what we're going to do. We're going to be more the aggressor this time, and so come in September of this year, we're going to start the negotiations for a long-term lease. They say it's not easy, but that's, our goal is, Jeff, is that it be 20 to 25, and so we're going to see if we can try to pursue that.
Oh, yeah. Regardless, I mean, regardless of the percentage, I, I think it's been a great partnership, and both sides have benefited by it, and I certainly think that we should, I will, motion to approve the three-year lease.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Regarding the fund for capital expenditures, do we, do we have a balance in that fund now?
We do. It's a little bit over $100,000.
$100,000?
Yeah.
And this, based on what I'm hearing, will have another 200, if I can do math, right? 200 and some thousand coming through there over the next three years, based on the numbers that are in there? Was it 80-some thousand a year, or did I hear the wrong numbers?
Well, it's 85,000, but it also covers just day-to-day operational expenses.
Oh, okay.
So they're putting about 750 a month aside for that.
Okay. What are they operating in? Is the gift shop is what they're operating?
Yeah, so they, so what we've done is, they have some office spaces, and then the actual public space that you see is 50/50 because they have exhibit room as we do. So really, the square footage, when you look at the full square footage, we're about 50/50 in terms of our offices, the space that they're utilizing.
That's a great shop. Every time I go in there, it seems to be new stuff put out.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's really-
Exactly. They do a fantastic job in-
Nice gift shop.
They don't have enough storage now, since it became a national park.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but how many visitors did you have last year?
Actually, I actually have that with me.
All right.
I just brought this with me. So just to give you a perspective, our average visitation annually was about 95,000 for the first 13 years, and this year, or last year, we had 170,000 visitors. We had the highest amount of-
That's people in the building. That's people in the building.
That's people in the building. And then we had 64 countries represented worldwide, and according to our states, we had 49 out of the 50 states. So I think we actually had all 50, and we just didn't get registrations from, I don't know which state it is, I haven't figured that out, but it is truly amazing, the amount of traffic that is coming through the visitor center.
Well, one of my, I guess when I was on the Convention and Visitors Bureau many moons ago, we pushed and tried to get the National Park Service to partner with us somehow to sort of enhance the center and make it a little more interactive, vibrant, whatever, user-friendly. Well, it wasn't just that, it, I think we could, yeah, I think it's more destination, and when you walk, when you come in there, there's things in there that are a little bit more impactful, and I think now that we have been designated to National Park Service, I think those discussions should start again.
You know what, Jeff, it's amazing that you said that, because of your contribution to that, we were able to create some concept plans.
Right.
And because we weren't able to get the funding to implement them, this Wednesday we're bringing back that same outside team to revise the plans. So the National Parks have put some money aside, so we're revising the plans. The biggest issue is that the price tag is about 1.6 million.
Yeah.
So, but we're trying to look a little bit more seriously, is how do we come up with those funds? So step number one is to revise the plans, and I think you guys will be very pleased with what comes out of that. So, and it's exactly what you're talking about, much more hands-on, much more of an attraction versus getting some brochures.
Yeah, I think with, you know, I don't think it's a secret here to anybody that we've, at our last meeting, we enacted, we selected our consultant for the Calumet Trail, and we're going to be working over the next several months in trying to develop a plan, a target budget. We're going to be meeting with the National Park Service and a lot of the people to come up with the concept. First of all, we need to prove it up, to see what it's going to cost, and then we need to have a discussion with our council. But at that point, as I'm in these meetings with the National Park Service, we're going to be bringing up this as well, too. So I think the time is right, finally, to start putting some thoughts and ideas together and start pushing, because I think if we do the trail, and somewhere down the road, we can complete this trail the way I think our vision is of how we want the trail to be, I think it should go hand-in-hand with upgrading that center.
Absolutely.
And so, we now have sort of a, we have the state investing 600 million into the rail, so I just think that we have a lot of momentum behind us right now, but I think we need to be strategic, and we need to go about this in the right way, and making sure that all entities are on board, and we're all rowing in the same direction. So that's just sort of filling some of the gaps for you, but we're slowly moving towards proving up this trail, but it's nothing really to talk about yet, because we have to prove it up, we have to get some numbers, and we need to have a serious discussion with our council members.
Absolutely.
I don't think, this has nothing to do with people for or against, I think we're just trying to be diligent to see what it's going to cost and what the price tag is, and then we can have the discussion from there.
Well, and it's going to fit nicely, because the visitor center becomes the trailhead, right?
Right.
And the other thing is, we just got our preliminary engineering plans to take, at least our site is going to become a Native American trail, and then, of course, the property surrounding us, which was given to National Park Service by a nice horse.
Yeah.
The plan is for that to be a really cool Native American trail. So there's just so much stuff that is working together, and to be able to kind of be the head of all of that, in terms of where people can come. We've been amazed with the usage of just the local people coming to the visitor center for the trail.
Yeah.
And it's, I mean, they're at night, so it's been surprising, the people that are parking there to use the trail at night, which is what really surprised me. So at different hours of the day, there's always traffic there, which has been, you know, really exciting to see.
And what, like Jeff said, we're not prepared to get into any kind of detail, but, I mean, I think our, us three, our opinions, we want that trail to reflect that, you know, the interest, you know, that the people have in it, what's going on at the Visitors Commission. You know, it's going to be ambitious, so, but there's a lot of homework that has to be done first.
And Mr. Good, you mentioned the rail project and the state funding. We tend to think of that as a commuter-oriented process to get the jobs in Chicago, but the inverse is true as well. People coming from Chicago out to our area, and those trains can bring those visitors to us, and they now have the capability of bringing the bikes on the train, and so there's, it's not just going into Chicago for a job, it's coming out to recreate in Porter County, and we need to be ready for them.
Yeah, I, Jim and I have both sat on NICD board, and we're seeing those numbers, and they're growing every year at a pretty good clip, so it gives you a pretty good idea that if this trail goes in, that's got to, that's got to be tickle more than what we're getting now, so, and that's more revenue for our line, too. That's more revenue for our train line, and so I, you know, I just-
Couple with the double tracking.
Just everything. I mean, to have a billion dollars invested in your north part of your county for transportation that's sustainable is the right direction.
And I take that, yeah, and I believe, you know, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I think that the majority of our residents see the north part of the county, especially along the lakefront, as recreational. They, that's what they want to see its use for, is for parks and bike paths and walking paths.
And you did a study 10 or 12 years ago, that we were branding and talking about ideas for, I don't remember talking about bikes, bringing bikes on the train, and we didn't get anywhere. It was really nothing now.
And how the platforms have been great, and then, just so you know, our office was part of the marketing campaign to get the bikes on the trains, but again, the platform-
That's our long time.
Exactly. Sometimes things don't go as fast as you want, but eventually, it gets there, right?
What I've learned, being in the development game, is that to do a good project, it's everything, it's all timing. It all has to line up. And right now, like I said, we have the wind to our back. We have the state looking at us, we have a lot of, we have the National Park Service looking at us, and I think now is the right time. Timing's everything, and I think we just need to ride this wave, but be diligent, and be smart, and do it the right way, which I know we can, and, but we got to pay for it, and that's the next thing. But we have partners that we're talking to, and we, so we're, I think we're, we have our focus on the right thing, but more to come, stay tuned.
Absolutely. We're excited, and we're excited to be a part of it.
Good.
One of the last administrative things is, back to the Corps of Engineers, even though the Visitors Commission doesn't own this building, they wanted the Visitors Commission's signature on the lease, so we did that, which only leaves a witness line for the commissioners to sign, but I hope you're not offended by that.
You've got to try harder than that to offend us.
Okay, all right.
Add some other folks.
But I'm asking that you, after your approval, that you sign it on the witness line.
Yeah, no, I testify. I think, you know, more to come, and I think it's, it's, it's long overdue, but I think it's also going to give an injection to that area up there, to be able to do some other cool things up there, too, so it's just-
Well, I've been in some discussion with some developers, and I'm like, you have no idea that there is a lot of developable land right outside the national park. But now that it's a national park, now all of a sudden, it's got the, you know, people are like, okay, I want to be a part of that.
And for some of you that don't know, I believe Michigan City right now is in the process of bringing their trail out to the county line right now, too. So when we put this trail in, we're going to be able to connect to, you'll be able to ride a bike all the way to Michigan City downtown. And with a lot of the things that they have going on over there in Michigan City, it's an exciting time for that lakefront community as well, too, so, well, all those communities-
And there are a lot of land to connect with.
Yeah, the town of Chesterton's going to benefit.
It's going to be able to go from Illinois to Michigan.
Yeah. Yeah, all the committees, all the communities along the rail line is going, you know, would benefit.
Yep, it'd be huge.
So we have a lease extension in front of us. Board, do you want to take action?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a three-year lease extension agreement for the National Park Service Visitor Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post sign, motion carries, and I will be a witness. Thank you. All right. Is that, no, that's it for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, have a good day.
Bye.
Next up, we got the Parks Department, Walter Lenkos and Dave Hollenbeck. It looks like we're going to establish a couple funds here, right?
Yes, this is, this is good news as well. Through Walter and the Park Board's efforts, we, in the final stages of being able to acquire approximately 35 acres adjacent to Brink Across, which will expand the usability and hopefully the visitors that can be accommodated at the Brink Across facility in Pine Township. That's being accomplished in its entirety with federal grant money. We've got two grants, one in the amount of $150,000 from the Indiana Lake Michigan Coastal Program, and $179,000 from the Conservation Fund, which is a distribution of monies received from a consent decree resulting from the legal settlement of the Embridge Pipeline litigation. The auditor appropriately, and the State Board of Accounts requests that each time we get one of these grants, we establish, you establish a fund into which the grants go, and then they audit their from. So you should have in front of you two ordinances that accomplish each of those purposes. They're very similar to ones you've done in the past, and we're asking your approval. Walter, we're looking to close here expeditiously.
Correct.
Hopefully March.
Oh, fine, okay.
And if we get the funds established, we got the final executed grant agreements here within the last week.
Correct.
And the monies can flow in and come out.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Well, we got to do readings. These are, we're creating funds, accounts. So it says first reading?
No, it's going to have motion on first reading.
Oh. I got to open up the-
We have got a public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say. But if you want to, you can go ahead.
Go for it.
Yeah.
Try and move things along.
Okay, so what we're going to do here is our public hearing, we're going to suspend the commissioners' meeting right now and open up a public hearing. We're going to give three opportunities, everybody in the office, the audience, to come forward and speak in favor, and three opportunities to come up forward and speak against. So the first one, what we'll do is, we're going to offer anybody first opportunity to come up to be able to speak against creating this fund. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against creating this fund? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this fund? Now, we're going to switch, anybody wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this fund? Anybody, second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward, speak in favor of this fund? And with that, the public hearing is closed. We'll now open it up to the commissioners' meeting, and I'll put it to the floor.
Now, I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
To approve the ordinance establishing a fund for deposit proceeds from an Indiana Lake Michigan coastal grant to Porter County Park Department on first reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second for establishing a fund for deposit per the agenda. This is first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post sign, motion carries. Second reading will be on the January 28th agenda. Next up, we're going to do the same thing again. We're going to create another fund for deposits or proceeds from a Conservation Fund grant to the Porter County Parks Department. We're going to suspend the commissioners' meeting, open up a public hearing, same process. First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against establishing this fund? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this fund? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this fund? First call, anybody wishing to come forward, speak in favor of this fund? Second call, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this fund? Third and final time, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this fund? And with that, the public hearing is closed. Open it up to the commissioners' meeting and throw it to the floor.
Motion to approve the ordinance establishing a fund for deposit proceeds from a Conservation Fund grant to the Porter County Park Department on first reading.
Second. Motion and a second. As first stated, first reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post sign, motion carries, and again, the 28th. We'll see you back here.
Thank you.
Be back. Thank you. Don Welson.
Thanks, Welson.
Thanks, Dave.
Morning, Don.
Morning.
Hey, are we going to, are we talking about? Where should we be talking about?
Yeah, hey, Don, just before we get into your stuff, you know, when we had one of our IT meetings several months ago, we had talked about, maybe in the next meeting or two, getting on the agenda, giving a presentation about a lot of our security and malware and all the things that have been going on, I think we have some really, a good story to tell.
We do.
And I just, we're going to get you on the agenda, but I figured since you were right here, I asked you to stand in here, because I know how things go, we pass it tonight, but we would like to do that.
I, I've talked with my cybersecurity consultant, and he's, he's on board with coming back on the 28th of this month.
Okay, good.
Give a short presentation of what him and I have put together in the last couple months, as far as, you know, cyber attacks.
Everybody always asks me, you know, how LaPorte and Lake County got hit, and we didn't, and next meeting, we're going to explain to everybody why we didn't.
But not in too big detail, though.
Not in too big a detail, right, because we can't let the people that are out there looking know, but we have some safe narrative that, you know, I just want to be able to give comfort to the people here in Porter County of what we're doing and how we're going about it, because this is a real issue in today's world. I mean, it's a-
We're not just lucky.
Yeah, we're not just lucky, and we want to tell the folks the story, but not the whole story.
Correct.
So, because we just don't want folks to mind us, so to speak. So, sorry about that, folks, it's a little housekeeping, but we're trying to set the agenda for the next meeting. So, what you have in front of us now, Don, is a quote from NIDCO, and this is to provide additional backup storage off-site for the, in Hebron for disaster recovery in the amount of $199.95 per month. And what is that for? That's for the counties?
Yeah, we actually had another contract earlier that we rented four U's of space in their data center. So we got our storage in, got the storage all hooked up, and we ended up putting in an extension to the storage, so we needed another four U off of his rack. So now, we're actually leasing eight U on a three-year, three-year period. That's going to go up later this year, when I get my VMware servers installed down there, just to let you know ahead of time. But we've been actually replicating all our data down to the DR site since a little over a week ago.
Good.
So now I've got three sites. I've got this site, I've got the courthouse, and I've got my DR site. Now I sleep at night.
So the backup has backup?
It does.
Good. That's what we wanted to hear.
And that's, that's what this is all about.
Yep, yep.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for NIDCO. This is a quote to provide additional backup storage off-site for disaster recovery in the amount of $199.95 per month. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post sign, motion carries. Next up, Network Solutions. What do you got here, Don?
Yeah, that's the annual fee that we pay Network Solutions to be on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, in case my engineers can't handle something that breaks, there's a four-hour response time for them. We basically did this because of the juvenile center and the Sheriff's Department and 911.
Yeah, it's much, lot more phones.
Yes.
Lot more.
Important phone.
Yeah, important phones.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Network Solutions for a maintenance agreement to provide help with trouble calls for our phone system. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post sign, motion carries. Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
Yep.
Ray Floyd, head of Buildings, Facilities, and the Christmas guy in Porter County. He is the Christmas guy, and I just want to thank you in your department. We, I know me personally, I've received a ton of compliments from citizens and other staff and people within county government. It was a big, it was a big step forward for county government in celebrating the holidays, so thank you, Ray.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yep.
Tell the team.
Yep. So what we got now, what do you got?
All right, well, first, we have an agreement with the IT server room HVAC. We came to you guys before. We were awarded to Mechanical Concepts. The deal with it is, the unit that we're getting is for an IT server room, and they didn't feel comfortable with the manufacturer specs on it, so they pulled out. So we're asking you for the proposal to accept DA Dodd's agreement on that and have them do it.
And what was their amount for DA Dodd?
$54,899.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second, we have a motion as second for DA Dodd to provide the server room where all the county servers are, an HVAC unit, and rescind the accepted proposal from Mechanical Concepts, which they were unable to meet the qualifications that were originally set out. And that happened during, once we were getting ready to set up the project, that's when the, it became obvious that it wasn't apples to apples, and Ray raised his hand, so we're back here again. So that's what's in front of us, folks.
Motion to approve.
Second, we have a motion as second for DA Dodd for an agreement to provide the server room and HVAC unit and rescind accepted proposal from Mechanical Concepts, which they were unable to provide. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. What's up next?
We have, at the animal shelter, we have the outside kennels. There's 10 of them. The dogs are chewing up the rubber around the chain link fence, and they're pulling it up, making it escape, dangerous to the staff.
Medini dogs.
Yeah, so we reached out to several companies. We did get a second quote from Northwest Indiana Fence, that's not up there. I would recommend using them instead of Z-Man Fence. We, the proposal-
So you've got, you asked for three quotes.
Yes.
You only got two.
Only got two.
And then out of the two we got, Z-Man is lower, however-
However, the quote that I got from them is just materials and labor. It doesn't give a scope, so I, I reached out to them several times to give me a better quote of what the scope of work is, and they have not been, they've been non-responsive. So I'd rather go with Northwest Fence, since we can't get ahold of them.
And for what amount?
The, for the kennels, it is $6,750. And for an optional, we can do the back line of the fence, too, for an additional $2,750. And I would propose that to you guys, so we can keep the fence all one, one brand, one kind.
So if we're going to assume the Z-Man was an apple to apples, which we aren't able to assume, but if we were, that was a $6,037.38 quote, and then, um-
Without the option.
Without the option of the back line.
And this, on the, on the vendor you're recommending, Northwest Indiana Fence, the apple to apple number would be $6,750.
Correct.
And then the additional $2,750 would be the optional additional for the back line.
Correct. And the other contractor just wasn't responsive.
Yeah, he hasn't returned any of his phone calls.
And he's also gonna have additional money to go on top of his bid, right?
Yes.
Because he's got labor and other things that he doesn't have in there. So, I mean, if he's not giving you that number, right, how we can-
And that's what we were trying to confirm.
Right, yeah. The law's clear, it's the most responsive. Responsible and responsive, not the lowest. Who, who's paying for this?
Uh, we are.
We are.
The city department.
Okay. We don't have any animal shelter funds over there, Tony?
I wasn't aware that the animal shelter-
But it's, like, what are you gonna, uh? Okay. Motion to approve Z-Man Fence Company?
No, no.
No, no, no. Whoa, whoa, whoa.
That's the one.
It's Northwest Indiana Fence.
Yeah.
You scared me, Laura. Well, we didn't want. It's Northwest Indiana.
I can tell she's a mom.
Yeah. She was all over that.
Um, are we gonna do the option? Did you include the option in that motion?
I didn't get the motion. What's, what's the total with the option? That's the number I need.
$9,500.
Yep.
$9,500. There you go. Go ahead. I'm scared now.
Uh, motion to approve the quote from Northwest Indiana Fence, including the option, for a total of $9,500.
Second, we have a motion as second for Northwest Indiana Fence to provide labor and materials for chain link fence for 10 kennels at the animal shelter, plus some additional kennels in the back, front and back. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Hey, Ray, is there anything we can do to, if we put this new fence in, is there some things we can do to make sure it doesn't happen again?
Well, my teams have been out there, we try to do it ourselves, to try to make this work. I really don't have any solutions besides change it to where maybe the dogs don't grab the rubber.
Is there rubber on this, too?
No, not on this one. This one's gonna be galvanized. Yeah.
So this should be, solve the problem, too?
I'm hoping, yeah.
Okay. If not, we're gonna have a big Dennis bill out there.
Right, right.
Okay.
And then we'll meet about how we're paying for this later, okay?
Okay.
Sorry, Tony. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Development, Stormwater Management. First up, we have Woods Edge.
Can we introduce Adam?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I know, it wasn't on the agenda and everything, but we just wanna introduce to everybody, Adam McAlpine, who started today as our assistant county engineer.
Come on up, Adam.
This is part of the initiation.
Yeah. This is part of the initiation. Hi, Adam.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yes.
So Adam brings a wealth of experience and knowledge to, to our staff. We're super excited to have him. He joins us after serving the city of Alperazo for-
10 years?
Nine years, as assistant city engineer and their stormwater engineer, and then for the last 18 months as their city engineer. So he's gonna bring a lot of capability, help us with our stormwater program, help us particularly with our development review program, and just further the mission, the development of our, of our programs upstairs.
Looking forward to it. Thanks, Adam. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. Okay, now Bob.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's important stuff. Let's, okay, now we have, next on the agenda, we have Woods Edge.
Yes, this is second reading. For Woods Edge, it was approved by the commissioners at their last meeting by a 3-0 vote, so.
Yep, so we'll take this to the floor for second reading.
Motion to approve Woods Edge on second reading.
Second. We have a motion as second for Woods Edge, a PUD ordinance regarding a development located in the southwest corner of Hayes Leonard Road and Joliet Road. Second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Reeve Riley, what's up next?
Uh, this is Bridge 1001. This is on West Streets, over Salt Creek. It's just right out here, by the curves of Horse Prairie going west towards the car dealerships. Staff is recommending Reeve Riley for this project. They had a bid of $182,007.18.
Motion to approve.
Second, we have a motion as second for recommending Reeve Riley as the contractor for Bridge 1001. This is West Street over Salt Creek in the city of Alperazo for the amount of $182,0718. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries.
All right, next up is the LPA contract for Bridge 68. This is Smoke Road over Jones Ditch. The LPA in that contract is for the federal funding that we have for the construction dollars on that. And we need to go through this now, because there is a particular number, the EDS number, that our consultant needs, because we're starting in the process of right-of-way acquisition for this bridge. We're, right now, we feel we're ahead of schedule on this, which is good news. So this is for the in-depth LPA agreement and for our federal construction dollars.
This was a bridge that got ripped away during the flooding, no?
No, not this one. This is open, this carries Smoke Road over Jones Ditch. The one that got damaged during the 2018 flood is in the same area.
It's the same area, yeah, okay.
Uh, but that's, that carries 50 West over Cobb Ditch. Same spot, but-
Different ditch.
Yep.
Okay. Throw it to the floor for action.
Motion to approve.
Second, we have a motion as second for LPA contract for Bridge 68. This is Smoke Road over Jones Ditch. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up.
This is the bridge you were talking about. This is Bridge 70-
No, 351. It's backwards.
Cobb Ditch. This is the bridge that was, failed during the February flooding event. On that, Mike has procured the FEMA funding for this on that, so now we are recommending WSP engineers for our consultant to start the design process for this bridge.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second, we have a motion as second for WSP engineers as the consultant for contract for Bridge 73. This is 50 West over Cobb Ditch. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. And then we, next up.
This is a change order for Bridges 152, Wagner Road over Little Calmet River, and also 208, Sherwood Drive over Lake Louise. These two bridges were combined into one contract, hence why we have them listed on this. This is a change order mainly because of, on Bridge 208, when we removed the old bridge deck or the old laminate that was on there, there was significant rebar loss on that, sectional loss with the rebar, so we had to put in a lot of new rebar for this particular project on the deck. So this change order is for the rebar, and I believe there was a little additional concrete that we had to do on the overlays.
Yeah, in essence, the, the contract adds a pay item to address that additional rebar that had to go in to reinforce the deck and remove, and remove the old. And then it also settles final measured quantities that were completed for the work. So it's an increase of $10,552.32 for a total contract price of $763,862.62.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a point that, you know, by having our own highway and our own engineers now, and this bid, this bridge was being built, re, rehabilitated.
Yes, rehabilitated.
Um, it's a long concrete that goes in Sherwood Forest. It's a, it's a good-sized bridge, and when we got into it, we found that we had some rusting rebar-
Correct.
And some spalling of some concrete and things internally, and we made the decision at that time, while we had it wide open, to fix it right. And again, I come back, this is just me talking, but I come back to having our own people in our own place with our different set of eyes and a different responsibility to the taxpayers, and this is, this is where decisions are made that, that have the right thing in mind. Because if we would've just went over that thing, we'd have been dealing with this five to seven years from now. And so, I know I'm on my little podium here, but I, I, once again, I'm just trying to let people know what we're doing, and when we see these things, we now have the ability to react in-house, which I think is very, very important when you do this kind of work. So, and I think $10,000 for what we were looking at is sort of a kick in the bucket for what we ended up getting done. So I'll make the motion for the change order.
Second.
We have a motion as second for change order for Bridge 152, Wagner Road over Little Cal, and Bridge 208, Sherwood Drive over Lake Louise. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Real quick, for the benefit of Commissioner Good and Commissioner Blain, could you just, real quickly, I see that, that Akterhoff showed up today. Just give a short overview of what we met last night in the residence.
Happy, yeah, happy to do that, Commissioner Biggs. So if you recall, the December 17th Board of Commissioners meeting, Mr. Akterhoff and several others from the Graham Woods subdivision of North Indian Boundary, Town of Chesapeake area.
Yeah, 24 residents in their home.
Showed up, and so we set up a meeting with them and the community. Ron was, was gracious enough to host the community. 24 residents showed up, which was great, to have an open and candid conversation about concerns associated with Graham, Graham Lake, or the pond in Graham Woods there. We have a public road that's a one-way in, one-way out. We have concerns, there's beaver activity up there, dams that are impacting that existing drainage infrastructure. We have concerns about, first and foremost, about protecting that roadway and taking action so that roadway, those culverts don't get washed out, and that roadway doesn't get undermined, and we have an emergency situation up there. But I thought it was a great conversation, with the county laid out what our plan of action was going to be, and the residents all had a chance to ask questions, share concerns, share viewpoints and opinions. And Commissioner Biggs attended, and I just thought it was a great, candid conversation, the way that we should be conducting business openly, transparency, with transparency, and communicating with the residents that we are serving. So we laid out what we're gonna do in the coming months, with the end goal, so some temporary improvements to make sure those culverts are open and flowing, with the long-term goal of basically replacing those existing culverts, so we have a structure that requires a lot less maintenance and, and provides us with a level of comfort about how it's gonna manage water levels moving to and through that system.
It, you know, Jeff touched on it a couple of minutes ago about, you know, the changes within the planning commission, hiring our own engineers, and, you know, this, that meeting, to me, I mean, it really marked a change in how we're approaching situations such as that. Because it was, it wasn't a short time ago where that really wouldn't have been possible. I mean, somebody like myself could've been out there, but I don't have, as you know, the technical background to answer the questions that they were looking for. And it was, it was a wonderful meeting. You guys did an absolute great job, and I think the, the residents really appreciated that.
And with all of our work, not everybody's gonna get everything that they should, that they think they should or they want, but we're gonna explain to them what we can do, why we're gonna do it, and incorporate those, those asks and those concerns to the extent practicable in all of our, in all of our design work. So I agree, I thought it was a, a great community meeting, something we've been doing really since we opened our office. And, and, and we'll continue to do as, as we continue down the road.
Just real quick, Ron or Terry, what did you think of the meeting?
I thought it was very, very well handled. I mean, Mike, Mike and yourself, everybody was, had a tentative meeting, got a little out of what you're doing and what you're doing, and I think it was very successful. I really did. With 24 people there, I was amazed at the community coming together and getting their advice, questions answered, because we were all coming to me and saying, hey, I wasn't that good. It was, it was well-planned, and I thank you guys for coming over and handling it the way you did. I mean, it was very nice.
Thank you for, thank you for hosting. Thank you for hosting. And, you know, and it's a, it's a case study of challenge with stormwater management.
Yep.
In that it's not just one landowner or one entity. It takes everybody working together, because water's moving throughout the watershed and touching everybody's property, and everybody has their own ideas and thoughts.
I learned stuff last night about that immediate area that I have never, never-
That's right.
It was very informative.
Good. I like ending meetings on that kind of note.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's a good way to start off 2020. Thank you. Anybody wishing to address this board?
We have one issue.
Oh, 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 sorry. Don't really need them? No. Okay. Oh, that's right, I forgot. Lance? You wanna go ahead and?
So today, we originally did the Porter County Disaster Emergency Declaration in response to the Shoreline erosion issue. We originally did that. It expires today, and we did that on purpose at our last meeting to get us to this meeting.
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, I think pursuant to your recommendation, that, that emergency still exists. There are efforts underway to try to help, but some of those efforts have come and gone already. So I think at this point, your recommendation is to refresh the disaster emergency declaration for another 30 days, starting today, along with the accompanying resolution that would take us back out for 30 days, and I think we should probably put it back on, make sure our 30 days, when-
Well, it hasn't froze yet.
When February 18th.
Looking at the forecast, it ain't gonna happen anytime soon. Is there?
I think we should, I think we should push it to February 18th, from January 14th to February 18th, and then we can readdress it then, just get a better idea of what's happening in the, the next 30 days.
I'd agree, yes.
And just so everybody knows, there's a limitation on the emergency that we can put. It's either 10 days or 30 days. So this isn't something that we're trying to micromanage, we're just trying to work within the laws and the guidelines that are established.
We can, we can go out this far, it's just that the, the point of the statute is to not to put a blanket on for six months or a year and not review it. So I think at this point, we'd be okay, considering we've already done 30 and have extensive drone footage of the issues and some of the before and after, even on some of the current fixes that are being attempted, so.
Yes.
We can go out to the 18th, to a date certain at this point. I think we're at, what, 33 days? Statute's not a shall only be 30, but it's, it wants to be refreshed.
Correct.
I think we'll be okay at this point.
What should the motion look like?
Then I should extend, or I should put the emergency, the emergency declaration from today through February 18th.
So, move.
Second, we have a motion in second for an extension of the emergency declaration for the portion of the national lakeshore in, within Porter County borders.
Yes.
For, up until February 18th, 2020. All those in favor signify by saying aye.